Next item, please.
Approval minutes, approval minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Building and Site Committee meeting, December 6th, 2021, Board Report 21 hyphen 57. And the regular P-12 meeting, December 6th, 2021, Board Report 21 hyphen 58. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Hey, I believe we had a movement by trustee Barry and supported by trustee Moszep.
Okay.
Are there any corrections? Hearing none, I'd like to have a roll call, please, to accept the minutes as they are.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio. President McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep?
Yes.
Trustee Pachlikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
Next, special report, the Dearborn Education Foundation, Ms. Chastity Townsend.
Good evening, everyone. It's been awhile since I've been here to present to you, and I don't want to take a lot of your time. Even though during COVID, you know, most nonprofits have suffered financially, the foundation has not. We've done very well these last two years, and I'm proud of the work that myself and our board has done to be able to support the district during these difficult times. This year, we are celebrating our 30th anniversary, and we're rolling out a whole new platform for the year. We've done a bunch of videos that you will be see posted on our YouTube channel and all of our social media pages. They are all being translated in Arabic and from Arabic to English. So this will be the first time that I know that anything has been communicated in Arabic. And I'm proud of where we're going with the foundation. So you're going to learn from our founders of the foundation. You're going to hear from our teachers who have received grants, our scholarship winners, students who have gotten scholarships from us, our legacy giving and where we're going and what we plan on doing and what our goals are over the next 10 years that I plan on being with the foundation. With that being said, being our 30th anniversary, we are doing a text to donate 30K for 30 years. So this year, we're trying to raise an additional $30,000 to support some social emotional learning. So all of that 30 grand is going for that, and I've been working, you know, closely with Mike and a bunch of others here in the district in implementing some things that we think are going to be good and work with the district. So you can text the code 30K30years to 44321 if you would like to donate. Thank you all for your time. Do you have any questions for me? Adal?
I just don't have a question for you, Chastity. I know you said we don't have much time. We do have a lot of time for you, so please. Especially the good time that the foundation is supporting our schools, our teachers, as you mentioned. The work that you're doing and your colleagues at the foundation is so crucial for our district. We truly appreciate all of you and what you do for our students. I am a big believer of the foundation. I think it is helping Dearborn schools achieve its mission of being an exceptional leader in education and putting our students first to celebrate their successes, to support their education, and to inspire them to do great things in life. One thing that I am really excited about is Arabic one, that's really cool, and the crowdsourcing that you're doing, reaching out to everybody. Everybody can support, whatever you can support with. All of the money that is being donated to the foundation is given back to our schools. I know you're volunteering your time. Your colleagues are volunteering. The people on the board are volunteering their time. So this foundation is definitely for our district, and I've came to know the foundation since 2014 when they were advocating for the passing or advocated for a yes vote for the bond 2014 with Eddie. So thank you once again. I don't have a question for you, but I'm just excited for this campaign, and I'm happy to help out.
Thank you very much.
Anyone? Trustee Barry?
I also want to thank you for all the work that you do for the Dearborn Education Foundation. I do have a question. Where do you find the time? Because every time I get on social media, I mean, that's not a lot, but it's always out there. So I think you've took that organization to the next level with your expertise in the social media. So we appreciate that.
I have to say, a lot of this social media has been driven by our interns that we got from the University of Michigan. Every semester, I request an intern so I can mentor them and help them grow their expertise and their knowledge, get them out in the community and in the forefront, and they're very good at that. Most of them are journalism majors, but they're the driving behind that, so I can't take all the credit.
That's who you are, you know? You just took a compliment and passed it on to somebody else. So God bless. It takes teamwork, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question as well, and I don't know if you can answer it at this point, but the normal events that we have, the Mardi Gras, the Green Tide, do you know or do you plan on them still taking place in person, or is that just yet to be determined?
Well, we have not stopped having events, whether they've been virtual. I mean, we were very good at pivoting. We have a great team for video, you know, audio visual with the help of the district here, and we are planning to move forward in person. I have changed the venue for Mardi Gras on March 1st to a bigger venue so we can sprawl out. It will be a hybrid. If need be, we can pivot to online. That's not an issue. And I am planning to have Green Tide in person at Beeblows on June, I believe that's June 2nd.
I'm sorry, March 1st was the day?
Yeah, it's for Mardi Gras.
And what was for Green Tide?
I believe the Green Tide is June 2nd.
2nd?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much. Trustee Moszep?
Yeah, so I know we can donate through the link, but can you tell folks now that are watching where they can donate also through other options?
Oh, yeah.
Where they can go?
Yeah, you can donate online through our website at DearbornEdFoundation.org. We also have some crowdfunding campaigns up there. If you guys don't know about our crowdfunding platform, our teachers are allowed to create a place where they can go and create a crowdfunding campaign with us, and we help get that message out for them too. So not only are they reaching the people that they know, but they're also reaching our donors and our followers. And we do have some on there, a few on there right now that are trying to raise funds. So if you want to support a specific cause, you could always look at our crowdfunding tab as well.
So crowdfunding is a GoFundMe with?
Like a GoFundMe, but within the district because all of our funds go back to the schools. So it's a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely.
Superintendent?
Thank you. I just want to thank Chastity for outstanding leadership. She partners very well with our administrative team and our teachers and everyone, and really has taken it to the next level, and we appreciate the great work of the foundation and all the board members. So thank you. It's a pleasure to work with you, and I appreciate your leadership, Chastity.
I appreciate all of you. I love working with everyone, so thank you, guys. Have a good night.
One more little kudos, just personally. I know when things are different now, but prior to COVID, we would even run into you doing extra work inside the district, helping judge events and contests and things that the students were doing. So thank you for your dedication to the district in its entirety.
It's my pleasure, you guys. Honestly, I love what I do. All right, thank you.
Take care. Next item, please.
The P-12 audit report, Mr. Thomas Wall, Jeff Higgins, and Tom Marches.
President McDonald, Dr. Maliko on board. I just want to mimic, you know, Chastity is a ball of energy. She is a morning person, so if you're not a morning person, be ready because she's coming in the morning whether you're ready or not. This agenda item is our annual audit report. We delayed it since November because of all the activities we've been having at the board meeting. Today, I have the honor of introducing Jeff Higgins, who's the partner in charge for Plant Moran. Or Plant Moran, sorry.
Well, thank you and good evening. There's three documents that result from our audit process that you would have received. So there's the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audit financial statement. There's a separate federal award supplemental information, which is our separate audit of the federal programs administered by the district. And finally, there's the report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. So as the district's independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the district's financial statements to make sure they're reported in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits containing government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. I'm happy to report here tonight that based on the results of our audit procedures, we've rendered an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide on a set of financial statements. So as I said, we have issued an unmodified opinion. We had no difficulties or disagreements with management, and we had no material weaknesses or other significant deficiencies in internal control. So again, a clean audit report and a very clean audit process. So we've put together a presentation, just to touch upon some of the financial highlights. It's important to keep in mind that the financial statements do include both the P-12 school district, along with Henry Ford College and the Henry Ford College Foundation. We're going to focus tonight on the P-12 general fund, and this is the primary operating fund for the district. So again, here's the balance sheet as of June 30th, 2021. You can see the assets totaling just under $100 million, $99 million. Primarily, the assets are primarily comprised of about $58 million in cash investments. There's $34 million in receivables, which is primarily about $32 million of that is due from the state for the July and August state aid payments. So again, 18% of the district's state aid is actually received after the end of the district's fiscal year, and so that would be part of that $34 million of receivables. And then you see there's some other assets which are comprised of inter-funds and prepaid's. On the liability side, you see the majority of that, about $32 million, is crude wages and benefits. This is really related to employees who work throughout the school year. Their service is essentially complete at the end of June, but because most of them are paid over the summer months of July and August, we have to record those obligations as of June 30th. So again, that comprises the majority of the total liabilities, about $59 million. And then you can see the difference between your assets and your liabilities is your fund balance, which is about $40 million as of June 30th, 2021. Next slide, we take a look at the district's revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. Now, this would be for the year ended June 30th, 2021. So you had local source revenue of about $45 million. This would be primarily property taxes. State source revenue of $169 million, which is primarily state aid payments. And you can see inner district source revenue of about $13 million. This is primarily made up of the separate enhancement millage which comes through the county. On the expenditure side, you can see you had a slight reduction in expenditures between 2020 and 2021. Instructional expenditures were down about 3%, support services down about 9%. This would be consistent with what we've seen at most districts around the state. The switch to the virtual environment from an expenditure perspective tended to, we've seen, to result in a little bit less overall costs. You can see then the other financing sources is a $17 million expenditure. That's primarily made up of a transfer to the general building and site fund to be used for future capital expenditures of the district. So the net total of all this, your net change in fund balance for the year ended June 30th, 2021, was about $4 million. This last slide, we just take a look at the fund balance. The fund balance is an important metric for school districts, and again, it's essentially it's the assets minus the liabilities for the district. And the difference every year between your revenue and expenditures either adds to or subtracts from your fund balance. So again, as of June 30th, 2021, you had a fund balance of just over $40 million. Fund balance effectively represents the financial reserves of the district. It allows the district to deal for unplanned expenses, helps the district, insulates the district against revenue losses and funding instability. You know, certainly these last couple of years with all the uncertainties surrounding school financial due to the pandemic really highlighted the importance of maintaining an adequate level of fund balance. The question then becomes, you know, how much fund balance is an adequate amount? And this graph provides a little bit of context around that. Fund balance is often analyzed as a percentage of the total expenditures. So if you take your total fund balance of about $40 million divided by your expenditures for the year of about $205 million, that gives you a rate of about 19.7%. So as a point of reference, the state average as of June 30th, 2020, which is the last year we have data, complete data available at this point, is indicated by that yellow line. It was about 5.9% at 2020. You can see for the last several years, the district has been right around state average in terms of that fund balance percentage. And again, just as a point of reference, the Michigan School Business Officials Association recommends a fund balance percentage of between 15 and 20%. And again, you can see the fund balance percentage did go up this year. Again, this would be similar to what we've seen in most districts throughout the state. Again, we don't have data for 2021 yet, but I would expect that state average to continue to have gone up. So again, Dearborn is sort of right in line with your peer districts around the state, certainly been managing your financial resources to deal with the uncertainties that we've been dealing with throughout the state and throughout the country. So that was a very quick highlight of the results for, again, the year ended June 30th, 2021. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to address those this evening.
Trustee Moszep?
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I have a question about accounting principles, just to kind of bring them to layman terms. So when we do this annual audit for our district as both the P-12 and the college, what could be the options that you would give? Now, we received today unmodified, clean opinion. What could be the other options? What are the other options on the table if things didn't go the way they went today?
So like I said, so if a modified opinion is the highest level of assurance, if there was differences in account balances from accounting principles, if the disclosures weren't where they are required to be, then you could have what's called a modification. It'd be a modified opinion. In that case, we would say that, you know, the report is clean except for these items. And then in the worst case, if there's a significant pervasive error throughout the financial statements, we would provide what we'd call an adverse opinion, essentially saying that we can't provide any level of assurance on these financial statements. So there are different categories of opinion, because again, our job is to provide an opinion on the district's financials, so there are certainly different levels depending on, you know, do they meet that highest level standard? Or, you know, what degree do they not meet that highest level, and you can get those different levels of opinion?
And I don't know if you can answer my follow-up question toward that. Obviously, you do other districts as well. Do you see majority of districts getting unmodified, clean? Are there districts that are struggling in that second category or third category?
So generally speaking, if there's an issue that comes up, the districts will make the required modifications to get that unmodified opinion, but that's where then you get into. So as our job as the district's auditors are to report if there are those types of issues, if there are significant adjustments to the financial statements, if there's weaknesses in internal controls, we do have to report those to the board. So they might still receive an unmodified opinion, but there would be a separate level of reporting saying there were these different problems and issues with the financial statements. And so again, back on that first slide where I talked about, you know, we disclosed there's no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. So again, you could still get that highest level of assurance, it's just a matter of how much needed to be cleaned up during the audit process. And so I would say while most districts are going to ultimately get to that highest level opinion, there are districts that get there with a lot more challenges, and that's where we would have those other reportings of internal control deficiencies and so forth. So that is not an uncommon.
Did you have that challenge?
Not at Dearborn. So Dearborn, again, we had, it was a very clean audit process. We had, you know, no material, no internal control findings, no deficiencies identified. Again, a very clean, smooth audit process. Certainly, Mr. Wall, you know, Mr. Starrett, they do a great job preparing for the audit. It's a very clean, smooth process. And, you know, they've got a lot of experience within the district, and they do a great job of preparing for the audit. And, you know, we certainly appreciate all their cooperation and preparedness for that.
Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Tom and his team for always doing an excellent job on the financials. And those of you who have been on the board for any length of time remember when our fund balance was such that we had to borrow in the summer, and we had to pay interest on that. So we are very thankful to be beyond those circumstances.
As, you know, many people know, I have a lot of rules and regulations of why we do things and internal controls. It makes it hard work for a lot of people, for a lot of steps, but for this very reason, to make sure we're very accountable for our use of public money. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question for Tom, if possible, regarding the audit. So when it comes to, I actually lost the question, Tom, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll take the opportunity to thank Elaine. She's the Director of Accounting. She does a lot of the yeoman's work on this aspect, so I want to thank her for her hard work, what she does every day.
Yeah, I actually remembered my question now. Yeah, so we received, so did other districts, many funding from the federal government, from the state government. And that's why we see an uptick in our fund balance.
Yes, that is correct. Was going virtual, a lot of staff wasn't able to work for a variety of reasons.
Yep.
Lot of that salary cost and those operating costs were saved, and we put in fund balance. Even though we, you know, increased our allocation to the Building and Site Fund, it still generated a large surplus for this year. As, you know, Jeff said, it kind of happened across the district. Because we didn't know if we were going to go back in session or not.
And that's why we went forward with many projects to revamp our HVAC systems and bring in AC to some schools. And I'm glad that we're doing that, and we're utilizing this money very, very wisely. Are we also, I think I've asked this before, if we had a report on how specially Acer funds were spent? Do we already have that publicly available?
It's not. It just hasn't been, you know, cleaned up a little bit for presentation sake, but it is done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Looking forward to that.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action or signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary and may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. We have Mr. Jawan Nahbar. He would like to speak about the schools not being cleaned.
Mrs.?
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. I apologize.
No problem. Good evening, board. How are you? Good evening, Madam President. Congratulations. I'm here on behalf of the PTA District Council, so I'm here representing. People have asked me to relay some concerns to the board. We were talking earlier, you guys were talking about like keeping the outside of our buildings clean, and, I mean, we were doing amazing job in that aspect, and I am very proud of what I've been seeing outside of our schools. However, there are concerns of how things are being kept on the inside. And I've heard, people have been coming to me from across the district saying that their buildings have not been kept very well in terms of coming back from vacation. So when we came back from the break, a lot of people found their rooms not kept. So my concern is, you know, just making sure that we are on top of it, that administrators in their building are keeping up with their custodial staff, making sure that things are being done. Because if we are to keep our schools open, which I think is 100% what we want, and when we're really trying to make sure, we need to make sure that the insides of our schools are also clean and that teachers and staff and students are safe. I think one thing that, I think you were talking about, Adel, that how safe do people feel inside of the schools? And I think just a short survey of our staff and even parents, how safe do we feel inside of our schools? Hopefully, that can be something that can get put into place soon. But just making sure that we are on top of cleaning in terms of each and every building, and there isn't disparities in terms of, you know, one building in comparison to another. That's what I've come here to say. I hope that is something that we can look into. It's not just one building. It's a lot of people telling me. It's all across the board. So east end, west end, it's all, it's, there's disparities in one classroom in terms of another classroom too. So it's one building can be different parts of the building not kept up. So we need to make sure that our schools are meeting those standards and so that we can stay open. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Barry?
Yes. Thank you. We love our PTA council. Now, I'm very happy that you did not mention buildings by name.
Oh, of course not. I wouldn't do that.
By all means, please reach out to the administration.
Yes.
And if you're getting complaints from certain buildings, let Dr. Maliko or somebody in his team know, please. Because that's something that we take, you know, pride with.
And I definitely will relay that back to parents and staff who have reached out to me. So thank you so much for that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One moment, trustee Moszep. I too want to thank the PTA council. There's many of the people on this board that have worked with them and served on that council.
Our president is here as well too, and he'll be.
Absolutely. So thank you for your service.
I just want to mention, you know, I think our custodians are doing an amazing job, and the pressure of them, also, they've been very effective.
Yes.
Many have quarantined, many have actually quit.
And that's my concern. Is it quarantine? Is it staff shortages in terms of the custodial staff?
I can tell you their reasoning, but I think right now with COVID, a lot of people are definitely laser focused on how clean the schools are. The schools have to be spot on all the whole time.
Yes.
And especially in those days, we have, now we're working on the HVAC, and we're working on cleaning and getting the schools cleaned and desks swiped.
I think on the day-to-day can be hard, but when they had the break and a lot of people came back and are complaining about it looking filthy in certain buildings.
Sure. I think, you know, first of all, if those instances happen in each schools, I would highly recommend that you would reach out to their principal immediately.
One person told me that their administrator did speak to the custodial staff.
Then you go to the next.
And I'm not sure who that next level of accountability is.
Even our superintendent here directly, if this is a major concern in other schools, I would recommend that you reach out to Dr. Maliko and say, this is happening here at the school, at the schools, at the school or at this classroom. I think, you know, our school administrators should be definitely responsive to these comments. But we should be definitely very, I did air duct cleaning on New Year's Eve, and I saw a lot of crazy things happen coming out of our HVAC system, and I actually got sinus infection. I kept testing, I'm thinking that I had COVID for four days. I even tested for influenza.
Oh, gosh.
So it was a sinus infection, and I think that dust that came out, it was a reason why I had that many sneezing, and I think I was having these symptoms.
Yeah.
But with these kind of situations that we're currently having, we're currently experiencing, all of these sicknesses, obviously, they're part of the environment that we're in, and Michigan is unfortunately leading the nation in COVID cases.
Yes. And that's, that's too, is the concern that we do have, our community does have such a high rate that we need to be even more diligent in keeping our schools clean. Now, I'm not attacking custodial staff. It's quite the opposite. I have the utmost respect, and I'm a teacher. I highly value the custodial staff, and we couldn't be open without them. And we need to continue to make sure that they're being supported. So that's where I'm also here, is it a, something that is their lacking resources or? Yes, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to thank you very much for bringing your comments to us and your concerns. And trustee Moszep is correct, there is a chain of command that you go through, but thank you for bringing them to us. And I also wanted just to remind trustee Moszep, having a dialogue back and forth is not.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I just realized that we're.
It's not.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Thank you for hearing me.
Dr. Maliko will get with you as far as on this point.
Yes, thank you for hearing me. I appreciate the time and effort you guys put. Thank you.
And I'm assuming, Dr. Maliko, you still attend council meetings when they happen?
Yes, we have our council meeting Wednesday, so we look forward to, because we, there are a couple of us that will be on the Thursday's VIP committee, so we are participating in that as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a great night.
Next is Mr. Nabil Athalaya.
Good evening, everybody, and happy new year. My question to the district, I have a lot, question from parents comes regarding, you know, the season of wintertime. Buildings is cold. And I've been called maybe for buildings. They ask them, how was the temperature? And I went to visit. And I went to visit and they said they are directed by the district. Supposed to be between sixty-four to sixty-eight degree. So if you, uh I'm, I'm sure it's not up, you know, correct to be, keep the kids with that temperature, sixty-four to sixty-eight. And uh my second question regarding the PTA units in each building, it has, do you have to have uh insurance or not? Thank you.
Next, Ms. Crystal Paulson.
Hello. Congratulations, Mc- McDonald.
Thank you.
Um okay. I'm going to be reading and some things from Dr. Robert Malone and why my son will not be getting the vaccine. These are the words of Dr. Robert Malone, M.D., one of the doctors who contribute to the creation of the mRNA vaccines. A warning for getting kids' vax. Please read these, read this. There are three issues parents need to understand. The first is that a viral gene will be injected into your children's cells. This gene forces your child's body to, oops, to make toxic spike proteins. These proteins often cause permanent damage in children's critical organs, including the brain, nervous system, their heart and blood vessels, including blood clots. Their reproductive system in this vaccine can trigger fundamental changes to their immune system. The most alarming point about this is that once these damages have occurred, they are irreparable. You can't fix the lesions with the brain. You can't repair heart tissue scarring. You can't repair a genet- genetic reset immune system. And this vaccine can cause reproductive damage that could affect future generations of your family. The second thing you need to know about this is the fact that is the fact that this level of technology has not been adequately tested. We need at least five years of testing research before we can really understand the risk harms and risks from new medication, medicines often become revealed many years later. Ask yourself if you want your own child to be a part of the most radical medical experiment in human history. And I ask as a mother, my son doesn't want it. And I really wish that the teachers would stop talking about it because it is my choice as a mother and he doesn't want it. So I respect everybody else's choice, but you guys gotta let the parents be the parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Stephanie Butler?
Trustee McDonald, I'd like to respond, if possible. Thank you. Um I I cannot have this post. I know we have citizen participation where citizens can come and speak to us about our schools, but to take it as a place of spreading misinformation, in my opinion, is not a place for this podium. If you want to have a science discussion, then we would bring scientists. Excuse me, I did not interrupt you, Ms. Paulson, and you do not have the floor. If we want to have a science discussion about vaccines, then we bring the people who have dedicated their entire lives to study infectious disease, diseases and to look into this.
We can do that.
Yes. This is not the place to come and tell me of somebody who made a claim and then you're spreading it like it's a fact. I I I respect your opinion that you don't want to vaccinate your kid. Nobody's forcing you to vaccinate it. I don't think this board has even came close to talk about this discussion. We're talking about preventing this. Excuse me. Excuse me, I'm, I'm speaking.
Okay, I will have a dialogue going back and forth.
I do have the floor right now. You cannot interrupt, you already had your time. This is how things work here. If you want to have my discussion, then that's not a displace.
I was being nice, guys, tonight.
Yes, absolutely. Trustee Moszep, I've noticed you, I've, I've taken note of your, your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Um tonight, I wanted to um ask some questions. Um I did try to call and address my school um regarding this issue, but I have, it's been three days and I have not received a phone call back. So maybe two days it's been. Today's the third day. Um so I have been hearing from my daughter that she's really upset. She lost her Spanish teacher this year, her um Spanish too. She got a replacement teacher and on that teacher's first day, she walked out of the building and left. And then again, she was left with no teacher, right in the middle of the day. And my daughter's really concerned because she said, Mom, I have finals and I really need to know what's going to be on my finals. And because this is happening, I don't have any idea what I'm supposed to be studying for. And I just, I don't think that's fair. Our kids have lost a lot, a lot. And she also told me something that was just as concerning. And I don't know if anyone can tell me if this is true since I'm not getting a response back from the administration in my voicemails. Um she told me that children or kids who graduated last year are subbing, are subbing in our schools, that just graduated high school last year. And I won't name the school, but, I mean, you can shake your head. I don't know that you would know that answer, but I think that I would take my daughter's and my son's word over the board because they're there and they know what's going on. And so for me, that's very alarming, not only because they're not educated to be teachers, but B, because these kids know that they just graduated last year. So they don't, they don't respect them as authority, they don't take them seriously. Uh there's all sorts of issues that can come in to play with that. And I just wanted to know, um are, are my children like just telling me this? Or does anyone know that this is happening? Because for me, that's, that's really concerning as a parent. And if, if not, do you, does anyone know why I can't get a call back from, from the school when I want to address these questions with them?
We will, we will definitely find out why you haven't received the call back and we will get back to you with your concerns.
Okay, and then do you have any suggestions for my daughter on her Spanish finals? On what she could study for, what should she be, what's going to be on her final?
That is a discussion that would need to happen on the uh building level.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that you get contacted from your building level.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Samara Joseph. She would like to speak to the board about street signage regarding Gear Park Elementary.
Good evening and thank you for your time. I am the crossing guard for Gear Park Elementary School on Prospect and Charles. As everyone is aware, start and end times changed in August. The no left turn signs have not been changed. It's very confusing for me as the crossing guard. It's very dangerous for our children. It's very confusing for the drivers. Any assistance in having that corrected would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concerns. We'll make sure that somebody gets back with you and addresses the situation.
Thank you.
And Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Ms. Joseph because she, obviously, she was in Omar's school for a long time. And Ms. Joseph, thank you so much for um doing the crossing guard volunteering and then obviously being now. Um it's, it's a, it's, the pay is minimal, but she's doing it out of the kinds of her heart all the time and greeting the students with the biggest smile. And now in the winter, um bundling up definitely for the winter and welcoming our students and making sure that they're safe when they get to um the classroom. So Ms. Joseph, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Um next, Mr. Joseph Sickemur, I'm sorry. Um he would like to speak to the board about COVID and school. I apologize for the last name.
Hi, how are y'all doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. No worries about the name, it's confusing. Um so I'm a teacher and a community member um in Dearborn. Um I actually live very close to where I work, which is really convenient for me because I can like walk to school. Um but so something that strikes me uh when I hear about these meetings is that it feels to me that we're always reacting to the pandemic rather than being proactive. I think the testing that we've set up is a good start. I don't know if it's necessarily enough yet. Um the reason I say that is because oftentimes the data that we're talking about is showing us what's happening in the past as opposed to what is going to occur. We're not being proactive, we're not looking into the future. So my question is then is like, what are we waiting for? If we sit here and wait until people get sick and there's enough teachers out that the school has to shut down, what is, what is the point that we're waiting for here? Are we just hoping to keep coasting along and the schools and the students are never out in enough numbers to actually close down? Right? So that's what I'm interested in um from the board and from the district. Um something else that I notice is that the board always talks about learning loss and like what kids lose by not being in person. And as a teacher, I know there is quite a bit that students lose by not being in person, obviously. But I like to remember that we have to balance that out with what we stand to lose when we allow a pandemic to rampage unchecked through large groups of people. Twenty to thirty percent of people who get COVID, regardless of age, will experience long COVID, which at the very least lasts months and may be completely permanent. COVID can get into the brain and reside there in the long term. It kills neurons, which are irreplaceable, and it's shown to increase children's chances of developing diabetes between thirty-eight and a hundred and sixteen percent. All right, these are new studies that are just coming out now. So it's not a not serious thing that's happening. And will this happen to everybody? No. But it's still a very big risk and you're holding a lot of power over a lot of people. No one talks about the students and the teachers who do keep their masks on, who don't want to be sick, being at the mercy of those who don't care. Um no one talks about the constant pattern of absences and the expectation that students work online while their, their family are sick or somehow have to catch up despite being sick. The adjustments that we have to make for the students to help them succeed is often quite a bit of work and it's very fatiguing on us. I had a student not come to school all last week because her father was worried about Omicron. And to be honest, if I was a dad, which I'm not yet, but I will be one day probably, I would do the same thing. I probably would have kept my kids home. Um to me, it just does not seem safe. Uh Adel, you asked earlier about staff mental health. Uh there was a recent informal poll that went around uh to, and a couple hundred teachers or so in Dearborn uh answered it. And it found that a significant majority, greater than eighty-eight percent, don't feel safe at school. Eighty-six percent want to be temporarily virtual and ninety percent want additional COVID safety measures. Even if we can't go virtual, we still want more COVID safety measures. Like I said, I think we've done a good job of building up a base, but the measures aren't strong enough. And there's a lot of places where the system is breaking that we need to work on. We are exhausted, stressed and feel distinctly that the district does not have our safety nor the students' safety in mind. And that may not be true. It may not be true that you don't have the safety in mind. I believe that you all do have the safety in mind, but that's how it feels to us. Okay, I want you to understand that. It's interesting that there's such an incongruity between the teachers and the admin and we have to kind of wonder at the source of that. Why is there this disconnect, right? Um it's hard work to be virtual, it's much harder than being in person. It sucks. I did it all last year. It was not fun. I worked really, really, really hard and did not see a lot of success. Um but the fact that we view it as preferable to being in person should tell you something because all the teachers feel that way. Not all of them, but most of them. So I urge board members to follow the lead of all major districts in our area and pause in person learning until cases are not at record highs and there is some semblance of normalcy again. When we come back, we need to have more rigorous testing policies set up to work on preventing spread, not just monitoring it. We also need to have tighter plans for keeping track of visitors to our buildings, not just for COVID safety, but for our physical safety as well. Because we did reference Alice earlier and some of the buildings still need to be a little bit stronger, locked down, in my opinion. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um lastly, we have a blue card. They don't wish to speak to the board, but they would like to make the following comment. It was from Allison Wolfski. I want to extend my appreciation to all staff within Dearborn schools. I have three children who attend school. They're all supported each day. Our staff is the best.
Indeed.
Thank you for that. Thank you for bringing your concerns to the board and taking the time to be involved in your children's education and in our district. We will um contact you with answers to your questions.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Joseph, I, I forgot your last name too, so I'll, I'll keep it at Mr. Joseph. Um I would hope you, you were talking about reactive versus proactive approaches. And it seems like you're, you have a lot of ideas uh about proactive measures that you would take. And obviously, you're looking, you're an educator and you um, you have seen other districts also do their proactive measures when it comes to COVID. And I hope that you can direct them to our either superintendent um or the director of safety, uh Mr. Leacher, he's here. And I hope that the district can look into if those proactive measures that you're speaking of um and the best practices, we, we've been, I, I believe they've been working on those things. But if you have newer ideas, I, I think they should be studied by our administration. Thank you.
Trustee Moszep, again, I, if you could talk to me or instead of having a dialogue with.
I'm not dialoguing, I'm just asking him to, to do that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
It makes the meeting full of.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I'm not asking him for a response, for sure. I'm just asking him for a favor.